I'd like to call the January 24th, 2023, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. I'll remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public later in the meeting that we will take up this evening. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of business consideration today is Agenda item number five, Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make-- I should go right down.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, and there's no additions or corrections. We approve it. Minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. And with the one absent, he is actually joining us today via Zoom. So, welcome, Mr. Dillard. Agenda item number six, Mr. Grindstaff is in Richmond with those, I guess, meeting with legislators since this is part of the General Assembly, unable to be here. You do have background material as part of your board packet, and then, of course, at any time, call Mr. Grindstaff should any further detail need to be answered, or staff members can obtain that information for you. Agenda item number seven will take up financial matters, starting with 7A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Appalachian Region Commission Grant. Mr. Wagner.
Good afternoon. I had previously mentioned to you that the county had received a grant of $1,200,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission for improvements to Reservoir Road as part of Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Staff is coming to you today asking the board to appropriate these funds for this purpose.
Okay. With that, what is the desire of the board in regard to this appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of 1.2 million received from the Appalachian Regional Commission grant for improvements to Reservoir Road.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Agenda item number C, Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Sheriff's Office-- excuse me-- by B, I apologize. Additional appropriation referencing part-time employee for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Henry County Court Jennifer Ashworth is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $8,114 to her non-county discretionary monies to fund a part-time employee to assist with a project within the clerk's office, estimated to take about six months.
Okay. The board has background material and a memorandum of understanding from the clerk's office. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the additional appropriation of $8,114 to the clerk of court's office as the information was presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Now, 7C, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $95,000 from state asset forfeiture funds for the purpose of purchasing two replacement vehicles for use by the Special Investigations Division in his department. And Sheriff Perry is here. Should you have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of $95,000 from the state asset forfeiture funds for the purpose of purchasing two replacement vehicles for the Sheriff's Office Special Investigations Division.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-- excuse me-- five, zero. I'll get right to the-- Jennifer, one absent. 7D, Award of Contract for Replacement Vehicles for the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract to C.E. Ford in Richmond for the purchase of three police and utility vehicles totaling $118,404. Funds for this purchase are included in the fiscal year 23 capital improvements plan base.
Okay. With that, what action would the board like to take in regard to this awarding of contract?
Mr. Chairman-- I'll make a motion that we approve it. The contract received forward for $118,404 for the replacement of three vehicles.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. 7E, An Additional Appropriation Referencing the Virginia Tourism Corporation Grant. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $50,000 received from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. The grant funds will be used to provide an updated sign at Philpott Lake and Marina, as well as other tourism-related projects to be determined within.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the grant fund for $50,000 received from Virginia Tourism Corporation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. 7F, Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth Attorney Andrew Wester is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $3,000 from state asset forfeiture funds to cover travel-related expenses for his office.
All right. In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of $3,000 from the state asset forfeiture funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. 7G, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Carryover Funds for the School Board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is asking the board to approve the carryover funds totaling $549,342 from fiscal year 2021 to 2022 to the current fiscal year of 2022 to 2023. Superintendent Sandy Strayer has indicated that carryover funds will be used to cover the cost of capital projects such as a new rooftop HVAC unit at Bull Park Middle School. This request is in accordance with the joint resolution approved previously about both boards regarding carryover funds. And Dr. Fuddin is here. Should you have any questions?
What action would the board like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion that we approve appropriations for fiscal year 22 carryover funds for $549,342 to the fiscal year 23 school board budget for school-related capital projects. Ask for Z.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. 7H, Additional Appropriation Referencing Library of Virginia Records Preservation Grants for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Circuit Court Clerk Jennifer Ashworth is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $50,884 received from two grants awarded from the Library of Virginia Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Programs. Clerk Jennifer Ashworth will use the grant for reformatting and indexing of certain wheels and preservation of marriage bonds from years past.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of $50,884 received from the Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Program.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. 7I, Award of Contract Referencing Financial Auditing Services for the Finance Department. Mr. Wagner.
The county has used Creel Jones and Associates CPA firm as an independent auditor since 2007. The current contract ended with the most recent audit, and staff has requested the board to award another contract to the firm extending their services through fiscal year 2027 with the option to extend it through 2029. The fees are listed there in your working papers for fiscal year 23 and 24. The fee will be $64,250 annually, and it increases slightly for subsequent years. The Purchasing Department has approved this awarded contract, and staff is bringing it to you for your consideration. And Mr. Jones is here. Should you have any questions?
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board award a contract with Creel Jones and Associates for financial auditing services through fiscal year 2027 with a two-year extension option.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Thank you all for thoroughly covering all your background material that's associated with. Thank your staff for providing that. That helps expedite things when we have this amount of financial matters. We didn't go quite always through the alphabet, though, so--
But I trust you like the new format of the board packet, slightly different than what we used in--
I like the format. Thank you. And again, the background material, providing sufficient background material is always helpful. With that, we'll go to Agenda item number eight, informational items, and we'll begin by taking comments from the board. Mr. Zaire.
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dillard. I'll swing around. Do you have any comments?
I just want to thank Dale and George for coming down to the Irishwood Fair on MLK Day, and I appreciate them. Appreciate everybody's support, and look forward to seeing you guys on February 6.
All right. Great. Thank you. Mr. Bryant.
No, sir.
Ms. McKinnon.
I do. I do see some representatives from AEP in the audience, but I have a letter here that was written in regard to the rate increases for AEP from the Preston Scales Drive residents that I'd like to submit for the record with the concerns of the increase in the bills. And I'm sure, like most of the supervisors have, have received calls and comments from their residents in regard to that.
All right. I'll ask Mr. Powell if you'll receive-- any other comments, Ms. McKinnon.
No, sir.
Ms. Slaughter.
Yes.
And I have-- Mr. Wagner.
Just a few items. Just a reminder, the board's annual planning session is scheduled for Monday, February 6, starting at 4:00 p.m., and we'll hold that at the Seacat Building located in Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. It will be a good time to see the development growth there in Commonwealth Crossing, talk about our recent grant of $22.2 million that we've received from the Virginia site rating and its business program, so we look forward to that meeting. If it's okay, I'm going to ask Brandon Martin to come to the podium, and we recently made significant upgrades to the county's website, and it went live today. If you would apply to him just for a few moments, I would like Brandon to show off some of his handiwork.
Good afternoon, members of the board. So, as you can see on your screens in front of you, this is the homepage for our new website. It has incorporated our new brand of Community Connected, and various parts of the website convey that message, and I'm going to go through a few of them right now. Over the top here, you can see where it says "Website Sign In." That's a feature on the website that we haven't had in the past where our residents can go on and create an account, and from there, they can sign up to get various notifications on different things going on in the county. To do that, they'll go to "How do I," and then "notifications," and then-- oops. And then, as you scroll down, there's various items. First would be the Agenda Center. So, anytime we have a supervisors' meeting or PSA meeting, election board, social services, they'll come up in the Agenda Center, and if they're signed in, they can click on this little icon here to receive an email, letting them know what the meeting is and all the information. And then, same thing goes for alerts. Anytime we have, like, an emergency alert or weather update, maybe closing of the administration building or something like that, we can post it to the website, and they'll be notified. Third, our contractors there, we love this, the bid posting. So, anytime we have a new project someone can place a bid for, there'll be a notification about it. Same thing goes for RPs and things like that. And then, finally, our calendar. So, Parks and Rec is probably going to use this the most. Anytime they have an event in the county, they'll post it on there, and it'll come up with the location and everything they would need to know about that event. A few other items have been changed. As you can see here, here's our government tab. We have a bunch of your information, such as your bios listed underneath each of your districts, and then information about our constitutional officers, county code, courts, restaurant, and then public schools. There's a link that goes to their separate website. And-- good. Another thing that we've done is we've taken strides to make our website more accessible to those with disabilities. So, those with screen readers, if they, like, hover over things like email branding, it makes it easier for them to be able to find our information than basically any other thing that has text, it'll read for them. And-- a few of our things have moved around on our website, so some applications for various awards we have are now easier to find through the Apply For, and then to Jack Don and Community Service, outstanding, and whatever. So, just various visual upgrades, but also functionality. I think this website is very good. And then, finally, a thing that I think is probably going to excite the most of our residents the most is our search function. A lot of times we hear that people can't find stuff on our website, and this makes it a little bit easier. So, for example, there's multiple ways to get to different parts of the website. If you go to-- say you're trying to find the assessor's office, for example, you could go to Government, Constitutional Officers, Commission of Revenue, and then Assessment Office. But not every resident's going to know that they need to go to that specific place to find it. So, you go up to the search function, just type-- Assessment Office, first thing that comes up, and then it's your first search result, and it takes you to the same page. So, hopefully, this will help get information to our residents faster, and we can cut down on some of the-- not miss information, the people not being aware of events and different things happening around the county. Do you have any questions?
Looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
One added feature that he did not mention, it is mobile friendly. So, unlike we had before, it's easier to navigate from a cellular device, no apparatus as well. He made mention of our logo, Henry County Community Connected, and we'll have more information for you all at our planning session on February 6, and our community will hear more about it throughout the year. So, we look forward to discussing with you more about that. My last item, and Ms. McKinnon alluded to it briefly, we do have representatives from Appalachian Power with us here today. I know many of you have expressed concerns about the recent rate increases. Supervisor Dillard has leaned on Appalachian Power company recently for some explanations and to get them to this meeting, so they have agreed to attend today, and we have with us Mr. David Swisher and Ms. Teresa Hall with Appalachian Power. If it's okay, I'll ask them to come to the podium to talk about the recent rate increases. And let me say why Ms. Hall is coming to the podium. Mr. Swisher is on our Economic Development Team when we're recruiting industry to locate in Henry County in Martinsville. He also was on our panel presentation to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership as part of getting the $22.2 million grant application. So, his contribution to that is not gone unnoticed. Thank you, Mr. Swisher, for having--
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on behalf of Dave Swisher and I, thank you for the opportunity to come out today and speak to you. By way of introduction, I'm Teresa Hamilton-Hall. I work in corporate communications for Appalachian Power, and I'm here this afternoon to share information with you about rates, the December cold snap, and the impact that both of these have had on customer bills. This is a topic, as you mentioned, that has generated a lot of interest. I can tell you, we've had a lot of phone calls to the company, a lot of emails that have come in, requests from the media for explanation, a lot of interaction on our social media pages, and as you mentioned, I was certain that each of you has also most likely received a lot of questions from customers and citizens as well. Our coworker, Amanda Cox, would normally be here and be doing this presentation, but she is with the General Assembly. She's in Richmond today and will likely be there for at least another month to month and a half. So, she asked Dave and I if we would find the opportunity to come out here and talk about rates and try to shed some light on what's happened over the last few months. So, that is why Dave and I are here, is to try to talk to you a little bit about that. And I do not have a PowerPoint. I just have some prepared remarks that I was going to share with you to keep me on track. The utility industry is one of the-- it's the most difficult job I've ever had, and trying to understand rates, it is extremely complicated. There's lots of folks who work on this in our regulatory office out of Richmond. It trickles down to us in Roanoke. That's where my office is at. Dave is in the Fielddale office, and so there's a lot of information that's spread upon a lot of us, and it's very complicated, so I thought we'd throw some remarks that'd be able to stay on track and better provide that information for you, and at the end, of course, we'll answer any questions that you may have. So, to start off, rates have gone up. We all know that. We saw that, especially with some of the December and January bills that have come-- that have arrived for us. Customer bills are about 35% higher than they were one year ago. Much of that can be attributed to two increases that went into effect in the fall. Together, these two increases added roughly $30 to the monthly bill from the customer. That is a typical customer, a customer who uses 1,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity a month, saw a $30 increase in the fall to their bill. If you use more than 1,000 kilowatt-hours, your bill is going to go up more. So, for example, if you use 2,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity in a month, your bill would go up $60, et cetera. The two rates that recently increased were the base charge for electricity and what's called the fuel factor. The fuel factor, which is a separate line item on your bill, it went up the most and is the result of the spike in the energy market. Appalachian Power uses natural gas and coal at its utility-- or, excuse me, at its power plants to generate electricity, and both sources of fuel have spiked over the last 18 months. Again, that's natural gas and coal. The company does not profit from fuel. The cost to the customer is dollar for dollar what the company pays for fuel to generate electricity at its power plants. The dramatic increase-- you may be wondering why that dramatic increase-- can be tied back to inflation and the ongoing war in Ukraine. The base charge-- the base rate charge for electricity, it also increased in October. The fuel factor was in November, and the base rate increase was in October. It was, as I said, the base charge increased in October, followed by the fuel factor in November, which was then followed by the December cold snap. The combination of all of this has impacted customer bills. Bills are higher than they were last year, as I mentioned. The average temperature in December was 10 degrees colder in December 2022 than it was in December of 2021, and that makes a difference. Most customers in Appalachian Power service territory heat with electricity. Anytime temperatures dip below 30 degrees, that heat pump is going to kick in, and the furnaces and the heat pumps will use more electricity to keep homes warm. That's because supplemental heat with those heat pumps, it kicks in and pulls in more electricity, as I said, to warm those homes. You don't have to touch your thermostat for your bill to increase. Most people probably don't realize or aren't aware that when supplemental heat kicks in, it causes that kilowatt-hour usage to increase and electric bills to rise. There is a fantastic informational video on Appalachian Power's website. It's right off of the homepage, appalachianpower.com. That video explains exactly what happens with a heat pump when temperatures are below 30 degrees. Talks about the supplemental heat, how it kicks in, and how bills go up without anybody touching their thermostat or doing anything different. You're going to be pulling in a lot more electricity and you're not even aware of it, and that's what we're seeing a lot of. Appalachian Power's rates are in line with the national average, and we are a regulated utility. Electric rates in Virginia are determined in rate cases that are conducted before the State Corporation Commission. The company must submit a rate case to the commission before rates for customers are raised or lowered. The company does not raise electric rates without the SEC's knowledge. If the commission, by its calculation, finds an interim rate is too high, the rate will be lowered and a credit will be issued to customers. We all know and understand that some customers are having a really hard time right now with their electric bill. Our employees are working by phone, through social media, doing all they can to help customers understand the payment options and the payment plans that are available to help them get through this cold snap, and they're doing that. They have been for over a month now, lots and lots of hands, trying to help customers with this, and to also make sure that they have the information that they need if they need to get in touch with social services. A lot of times, it requires documentation from the power company. We're doing all of that. We're also talking to customers about the neighbor-to-neighbor program. Here in Virginia, we also offer what's called an Energy Efficiency Program. A lot of people aren't aware of this, but we have what's called the Energy Efficiency Program, found under our website, takechargeva.com. That is connected with us. This program includes a free home energy assessment for residential customers. This is where a trained professional will come into a customer's house, take a look at their heat pump, look at their insulation, the amount of insulation, take a look at their windows and doors, see if they're losing-- how they are losing energy, and just provide ways to cut down our energy usage and ultimately your bill. Again, that's at our website, takechargeva.com. As I mentioned earlier, the utility industry is difficult to understand, especially with respect to electric rates. I've been with the company for almost 10 years, and I'm still learning something new every day. I've tried to, with the comments, remarks that I've shared with you, have summarized what's going on with rates and provide that overview for you, but I'm happy, along with my coworker Dave back here, to answer any questions that you may have, and if I'm not able, certainly, we can give that information to the county administrator, and he can share it with you.
Am I able to ask a couple of questions?
Yes, I can hear.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm looking on your website, and your Tennessee rate is 140 per 1,000 kilowatts, but Virginia is 165. What's the difference-- why is there a $25 difference in Virginia and Tennessee? And I asked that question to Amanda Cox before, and her response was that the technology folks just hadn't updated the webpage, and it was updated, but now I notice that there's a difference again. Can you explain that to me?
The website may have been updated. I know the fuel factor for Tennessee was actually $34, whereas it was $10-- or $20 for the Virginia customer because we spread it out over two years, or requested with the commission that we spread it out over two years. I don't know specifically what the difference is between Tennessee and the Virginia rates. I know historically, the Tennessee rates have been lower than Virginia, but specifically, I'm not sure what drives that and why there is the difference, but it is-- we're governed by a different body of regulators in Tennessee than we are in Virginia. But, you know, drilling down, I don't know specifically what the difference is. I can only speak to the fuel factor, and I know it was-- I can only speak to the fuel factor, and I know it was higher in Tennessee than it is in Virginia for the reason that we spread it out over two years here.
I think we may have lost the Zoom.
If you remember, if you're not there, certainly come join me, but that's my understanding.
I don't know specifically, but I would guess it hasn't. Our rates are cost-based. In Tennessee, we have a very small territory, so we have a lot of customers in a small area. Where in Virginia, we have huge territory, lots more customers per mile, a line, so therefore your expenses are probably more to serve those customers in Virginia than Tennessee. I don't know that for sure, but I was just looking at it, think that would have a tremendous amount to do with why. Our rates are different in West Virginia than they are in Virginia. We're governed by two different bodies, so our rates are different and different service schedules. It's based on cost-of-service package.
Would you, I realize you all are the messenger, and there's nothing worse than shooting the messenger, so to speak, and we're not here to do that. Could you provide and make available to the county staff how we can pass on to our constituents the best point of contact if they were to have specific questions?
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I guess we can get an hour on that Zoom link, and I got cut off.
Okay, all right, we've got you back.
Okay, I'm back on my phone, back on a different device. It wouldn't let me log back in on that device. And I guess if I could jump in a couple of other questions, because I've sent some emails. And one of the things I also noticed is like, you know, your CEO is making 16 million, and it's about five or six other folk in your company making, you know, around 5 million. Your Board of Directors are all making, you know, anywhere from 200 to 400,000 dollars per year. Like, at what point do we sacrifice their salaries so that people, you know, in a community like ours, where the median income is $22,000, and folk are paying $800 per month or in a month for an electric bill? And, you know, my bill went from 200 to 400 to 800, and I know you said it was like $30 every time we worked about 1,000 megawatt kilowatts, whatever you mentioned.
Yes.
But, you know, based on that formula, mine should have went up $150, but it went up $400. And I really wish, you know, we could have had this with consumers in front of you so they could ask questions, because there are a lot of people that are really frustrated and upset, and, you know, I don't have all the questions, but I think our citizens deserve to be able to ask questions if they're going to pay that kind of money for something that you can't get out of that. You know, it's not a car. You can go pick which car you want, you know, you don't have to go eat out, but you have to have electricity. And when these things happen, people should have the right to stand in front of you guys and ask questions and get good, solid answers. And if they don't get answers, they should get answers reported back to them at some point in time. And, you know, so I don't know if you can schedule something of that nature to give our citizens a chance, but a lot of people have asked me for that opportunity. But I'm personally frustrated. I know a lot of people are frustrated, and I think, you know, we're getting good, systematic, you know, answers, but they're not answers to, you know, why these rates are jumping up at this particular time of the year.
Well, I know our fuel factor, for one, we file an annual fuel factor application that talks about what the cost is for the company at that time, and that fuel factor application goes in, it's submitted to the SEC in the fall. So I believe it's September or October, and then the rate goes into effect November 1. What I can say is that Appalachian Power is a regulated utility. The Virginia State Corporation Commission reviews everything. We submit an application, and they review it line by line, and they can either agree to the rate that we've requested, or they can lower it. And I know with the fuel factor, that the commission did have a public hearing in December where they sought input from customers to say what, to give their opinion of the fuel factor request, the request to increase that fuel factor. There was a public hearing in December. The commission--
Did the SEC initially deny? Did the SEC initially deny, and you guys had to go to the Supreme Court? Is that accurate?
That is correct. That would be for the base rate, for the increase to the base rate. That was in 2020. And the commission denied that the increase for the base rate in January 2021. The company did appeal that to the Virginia Supreme Court, and the Virginia Supreme Court in August ruled that the commission erred in not allowing an increase to the base rate. That is correct. The company had not increased the base rate. We're in 2022 now. The base rate, the base charge for electricity, had not been increased since 2010.
And I, you know, and this may be a very simple question, but we know that, you know, during this time of the year, people are going to use their electricity a lot more. You know, why is it that we're increasing rates? And I, you know, I'm sure it'd be, you know, standing there, but why is it that we're increasing rates at this time of the year, you know, where folk are using their electricity so much more and there's no way to get around it? You know, even if it was a modest, you know, weather in December, it's still going to be, you know, a time where you have to use your electricity a lot more. Is there any reason that that particular time is when those rates are increased?
I don't know who sets the calendar for that type of, for your, for the applications that go before the commission. I do not know who sets the calendar. What I would do is say that customers need to sign up for the Average Monthly Payment Plan. The Average Monthly Payment Plan is very different from budget. There is no settle-up month out of the year. Average Monthly Payment is a fantastic program. I have it, and my family has it. And it's where it evens out your bill throughout a year, month to month, and there are slight changes. But what it does by evening out that bill is it avoids those really big seasonal spikes that we see in July and August, and in the winter months, December, January, February. It evens those out. And so I strongly encourage customers to sign up for that AMP program. In December, we sent a bill insert to all customers, encouraging them, because of what's going on, to sign up for AMP. AMP is a fantastic program. It's free. The company looks at each customer's bill and then determines on a rolling average what each month should be. But again, it keeps it so that it's more consistent, and you don't have those big spikes in those summer months, and particularly in those cold months, because our customers do use most of their electricity in the winter months. We are a winter-peaky utility.
Yeah, and that is great, but I still think that doesn't fix people's problem. But, you know, there are times in the spring, you know, my bill is $120, $130. With that plan that you're speaking of, it's going to be 336 per month. So there's still four or five months where you're paying a couple hundred dollars more than you normally would pay. And I think, you know, and I hope we can have a further conversation about this, because I think the issue is still the rates. Even if you get on a plane of that nature, it's still that your bill goes from $200 in October to $800 in December. And, you know, and we're just a community where that, it really, you know, destroys some folk, not just for that month, but for months to come. And I think that, you know, hopefully we can get you guys out in front of our citizens and have this conversation, because it's great for us to hear it, but our citizens who we represent, and, you know, I think if people are paying that kind of money, they deserve the right to ask questions and get answers and, you know, speak with you directly. So hopefully, you know, you'd be willing to come back in a more informal setting to speak with some citizens.
Mr. Chairman, did you have any other--
Other questions or comments?
The energy program you was talking about?
Yes.
I know I took advantage of it years ago.
Yes.
At that time, you could get like insulation, and they would finance it?
We have a low income--
No interest?
Yeah, we have a low-income weatherization program that would help a lot of customers.
Right.
And for whatever reason, it doesn't get talked about until the winter months, but it's available throughout the year. And that website is takechargeva.com, and you can learn about the free home energy assessment and about the low-income weatherization program we have. Yes.
And what was the, what was the name of the website?
It's called takechargeva.com.
We'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question. You mentioned the fuel factor, and you mentioned the cold snap in December, which was four or five days there. But it's also reported that December is one of, has been one of our warmest Decembers in the last few years. So you also mentioned the war in Ukraine. So are you saying that if the war in Ukraine were to end today, that our rate, our fuel factor would drop, or would it still stay the same and our bills would continue to rise?
So the fuel factor is evaluated every year. So if the war in Ukraine ended and suddenly there wasn't as much, the supply and demand wasn't the way that it is today, because that fuel factor is addressed every year, and it is dollar-for-dollar what the company pays for energy from the market, likely those bills, that fuel factor would go back down. There have been years where it, year after year, it's been the same, or it's decreased, or it's gone up a little bit. We've never seen anything like what we've experienced this year, but it is evaluated every single year.
Never seen fuel prices like we've seen this year either.
Right.
Everybody from Washington, that's all they blame it on is the war, so--
The country is exporting a ton of just lots of coal right now. Coal went from $60 a ton to 160.
Right.
That's one of the main things we use to generate electricity, is coal.
Everybody else is using it and sending their fumes over here, but we can't use it and send our fumes to them, so--
Natural gas is being exported out of the country also.
Oh, yeah.
So there's supply and demand, and that makes the cost of that also go up. It's the world we live in right now.
Yeah. Other items? If you all wouldn't mind, we will be going into closed meeting. There may be some one-on-one that some of them might want to see you just briefly before we go into closed meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard, for those comments. Mr. Wagner, okay. With that, that takes us to Agenda Item Number Nine. If someone will cite the items allowing us to go in closed meeting as allowed by the Freedom of Information Act.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority, Blue Ridge Library Board, Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition-disposal real estate, 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. I'll see you all upstairs in about five minutes. Out of closed meeting, on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board?
Yes, sir. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, only publicly business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Section 2-3711. Do you prefer to discuss more consistently in closed meeting? How do you vote? Mr. Zare?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard? Excuse me. Mr. Bryan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We will stand in recess until our 6:00 PM. I'll call the 6:00 PM session of the January 24, 2023, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess of the afternoon session. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board specifically at any of our regular meetings, you must sign up seven days in advance of the meeting to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, Matters Presented by the Public later in tonight's meeting, as Agenda Item Number 16. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out, participating in your county government, and we will get the evening session started. Agenda Item Number 10, General Highway Matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDA. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Be pretty quick. Right now, we're just doing our general maintenance. You probably see us doing a lot of work on the bypass, trying to repair low shoulders and guardrail and things like that on the primary system. The Reed Creek Bridge project, now that's going well. It's on schedule. We should be driving piles on it next week, and the fixed completion date is fall of next year, but we're on target right now to hit that. As you probably know, we use hired equipment to supplement our crews sometimes when we do these small projects for non-snow removal kind of related construction that we do. But we've got a new hired equipment contractor, F&amp;B Contractors out of Bedford. They've got quite a bit of equipment, so we look forward to working with them and getting some smaller projects out of the way this year. That's all I have.
Does anyone have any items for Ms. Hughes this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will mention, we do have Supervisor Dillard joining us via Zoom tonight. So Gary, I hope you're there. Yeah, we can see you. He was unable to attend in person. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 11. Mr. Wagner.
So the board supervisors established the Jack Dalton Community Service Award in 2001. The award is presented annually to the Henry County resident who best exemplifies the standards for community service set by the late Mr. Dalton. And I think one of the board members has a resolution related to this.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
I do, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Mr. Jack Dalton served as a member of the Henry County Board of Supervisors for more than 24 years and was serving as board chairman at the time of his death on May 24, 2000. And whereas, the Jack Dalton Community Service Award, recognized as the highest honor and most prestigious award presented by the board, annually goes to the Henry County resident who best demonstrates the exemplary community service that marked Mr. Dalton's years of public service. And whereas, one such volunteer, William Martin, has served his community as a leader in both the Horse Pasture Volunteer Fire Department and the Horse Pasture Rescue Squad for nearly 30 years. And whereas, Mr. Martin has instilled a love for service in the next generation through his classroom instruction and recruitment efforts for our local emergency services. And whereas, the community service demonstrated by Mr. Martin includes contributions to maintain the natural beauty of Henry County through his assistance with the annual Smith River cleanup and the mowing of yards for people who are unable. And whereas, Mr. Martin has made it his mission to help the less fortunate in our community by doing handiwork for several widows, taking food to shelters for the homeless and the Rainbow House, and even helping those stranded along the road with car trouble. Now therefore be it resolved on this 24th day of January 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors presents the 2022 Jack Dalton Community Service Award to H. William Martin. Furthermore, the board encourages all local citizens to emulate the good deeds of Mr. Martin-- the good deeds of Mr. Martin, who is a true public service servant in our community. And this is signed Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion in second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer, I'm going to ask the entire board to join me down front, since this is a Board of Supervisors award in its entirety. And Mr. Martin, would you please join us?
Well, I know how much you love our community and how much you want to give our community and to better. People around you, also the public service that you provide to our community. I don't think anyone can talk a lot which you do, so thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much.
I didn't prepare no speeches. I wasn't wearing this mask. Our word says thank you. I was surprised, but I do appreciate it. I just tried to be in person to praise him a bit.
I realize that a number of you may have come specifically for this. And if you choose to leave because of other commitments, please do so quietly and respectfully, since we do have additional items on the agenda. Again, Mr. Martin, congratulations. And I know your community is proud of you. Agenda item number 12 would be presentation of certificates referencing the November election. We have with us General Registrar tonight to present this. So Ms. Stotffong, we will let you take charge at this time.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having us. On behalf of the Henry County Electoral Board and our office, we would like to take a moment to recognize the local winners of the November 22 election. I'd like to introduce my board and have them come up as they're going to give out certificates to those candidates. Ms. Rita Schropshire, she is our board chair. If you want to come up. Ms. Valerie Edwards is our vice chair currently. Ms. Ellen Boone is our secretary. And our newest member is Mr. Joel Kennedy. We would like to come on up. We would like to have you up here, please. And I'm going to step aside and let them call the names and present their certificates.
Champ C. Hardy Jr. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the County of Henry held on November the 14th, 2022, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the clerk of the circuit court, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November the 8th, 2022, Champ C. Hardy Jr. was duly elected Ridgeway School Board Member, former term commenced in November the 14th, 2022, and ended December the 31st, 2023.
Craig O'Dowd. Michael R. Bass. Is Maude S. McCullough present? Elected member of the town council.
James P. Harrison.
I have one final certificate that I would like to present. Ms. Edwards, could you step forward, please? This is in recognition of, it's a certificate of appreciation in recognition of your exceptional and professional dedication to protection and implementation of our elections and the right to vote for citizens of Henry County. And board it commend them to promote voters' rights and electoral participation. Thank you so much for your time, board. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Yes.
It is with humbleness that I accept this certificate. The three years that I have served on the Electoral Board have been astronomical. It has been a pleasure working with this team, including our newest member, as I would go and visit him at his precinct. Welcome. I pass the baton on to you. But it has been a pleasure serving Henry County and on the Electoral Board. I made history as being the first African American to serve. But nevertheless, it's all about the, the citizens, and that's what our task is. It's not about Republican. It's not about Democrat. It's about democracy and doing the right thing. And that's what I'm most proud, proudest of, having worked with this team. Thank you all, and I love you.
This board, this board and the citizens of Henry County recognizes the efforts that the Electoral Board and all those dealing with the elections over the last number of years have been quite different. COVID brought about a number of changes. You all have had extended hours, extended days, and you have done so with all due diligence. And that's, speaks well of you all, but it, it speaks well of the pride that you take and the confidence that the citizens in return have that things are being done well above board. And so thank you all for your service to the Electoral Board. Next, we will take up rezoning applications. Agenda item 13, we have a public hearing on rezoning application R-23-01, Randolph C. Campbell. We have with us tonight our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark, Mr. Clark.
This property is located at 49 and 81 Tanks Prestige Avenue in the Horse Pasture District. Tax map numbers are 397123R and 124. The applicant's requested rezoning of two lots from agricultural district A1 to mixed residential district M R. The applicant wishes to create two additional lots out of this property. Following public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take any input on this at 6:15. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication of such, I will close the public.
Jim, I think you have one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see your hands. Yes, sir. Please come up. I have a brief statement to read prior, as you come up. This is a time for comment on this public hearing. We welcome your participation. We're here to listen to you. By coming to the podium, you agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, its members and staff. And please state your name, your subject matter, and try to keep your presentation to three minutes.
I have it read. I'm on Tanks Prestige. And I wanted to find out what was the rezoning all about. If it's just for water tap, I agree with you. But if it's for anything adding old houses and stuff in that percentage, and for what's been there, some of the people that live in the house that he rents out, it's, well, I'm not going to call them trash or nothing like that. But they didn't keep the outside and stuff up. I don't know how the inside is getting. But the area that we live in, it's been kept up. The people that owned the home before they left died, they kept them up. The outside kept the grass mowed and everything. Some of them let it get up past the door. And that's the only thing I was concerned about, the rezoning. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Red. Are there others wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Yes, I see another hand now. Thank you.
My name is Henry Tanks, and I live on 68 Tanks Prestige Avenue. I was just a little concerned about when the rezoning, because I never really understood what the rezoning was all about. And when I got the message that it was being rezoned, I was concerned about what really could be done with the land. I wouldn't want to put anything there like single trailers or anything like that in there. But housing, I go along with that 100%. If he just want to put a water line through there, extra taps, that would be fine. But we want to keep up the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Any others? Okay. Yes, okay. I saw your hand there at the last second.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Tanks. I'm just piggybacking on what Mr. Tanks and Mr. Red said. We would like to see our neighborhood stay as nice as it's always been, which my husband been on there 70 years and I've been on there 26. But we would, we don't have no objection to him putting a water line, but as far as putting everything else, because I have had to call Ms. Buchanan about some things that went on in the neighborhood with some of the houses that he had already rented. So, you know, we would just like to keep a nice, safe neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we have children and grandchildren that, you know, we have to watch out for too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Anyone else? Okay, I will close the public hearing at 6:20. Ms. Buchanan, this is in your district, and I don't know if there are any additional comments that you would like to make in regard to that.
No, as the people that spoke, the neighborhood is a relatively quiet neighborhood with very little problem at all. And I know their concern would be that a single wide or it, any, any kind of a, a house there not be kept up to a standard that that community is used to. But I certainly hope that the applicant has heard what the, the people have said, that they don't mind the taps putting in, being put in. They just want their neighborhood kept quiet. And, you know, I think any of us could understand that. But, Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? It might be noted that this is an upgrade from A1, which allows a little bit of everything. Any other discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda item 14, public hearing, rezoning application R-23-02, Brian A. Timbrook. Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Maple Leaf Road and AL Gil Pot Highway. It's in the Horse Pasture District. The applicant's requested rezoning of approximately three quarters of an acre from agricultural district to commercial district B1. The applicant wishes to market the property for commercial purposes or the potential placement of a billboard sign on that property, which would require an additional public hearing and approval by the Board of zoning Appeals. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:22 PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing and hearing no one indicating as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:22. Ms. Buchanan, likewise, this is in your district.
Yes. And I want to note that Mr. Walter Flippin had sent a letter, I think, to the planning and zoning, which was entered into the record there. So I want to mention that. But, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda item 15, public hearing, rezoning application R-2303, Ray P. Reynolds Jr. Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located on the west side of Blackberry Road, just behind the address of 2814 Blackberry Road in Blackberry District. Tax map numbers are 26523, lots 1 through 4. The applicant has requested rezoning of these four lots containing a total of approximately 20 acres from rural residential district to agricultural district A1. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request also.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:23. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:23. This is in my district. I have no problem with this at all. If someone on my behalf will make the motion that we follow the planning commission's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the rezoning request as, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda item number 16, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone other than our signed, we do have someone that's signed up wishing to address the board tonight under matters presented by the public. Okay, we have with us, as I've indicated, if you want to be placed specifically, contact the county administrator, Louis and Betty Turner. Mr. Miss Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're, Betty and Louis Turner, we're co-chairs of the Bassett Branch Library Expansion Fund. And we're here just to kind of bring you up to speed as to what is happening in our community. And we'll discuss what we intend to do about it. The current library was purchased. The current library was purchased by, actioned by this board and other in the Bassett community seven, twenty-five years ago. It's served our community very well. However, at this point, as new programs and new activities take place, it is just not up to speed in terms of space. And I'd like Betty to talk to her briefly about that.
Libraries today are asked to fulfill many other functions beyond normal reading and checking out books and a hook research. Local agencies direct their clients to the library, sometimes to, to bring to an end whatever that person needs to do to meet the requirements. Most of the time, the library is expected to help them fill out forms, and sometimes they have to explain the procedure to these clients. This requires a quiet space. You want something private, you don't want the whole world to hear what you're talking about. Another use of quiet space are tutors, which our library uses a lot. So this is another item we have for discussion. Our own programs need space. We have several successful programs. One is the Summer Reading Program. The other most successful is the Feeding Program. That's F-E-E-D, FEED. The Library of Virginia instituted the Feeding Program, and from the very beginning, our branch manager Karen Barley knew that this was a program that would be good for our area. She was successful in heading up the program. Her efforts were so successful that the Library of Virginia asked her to speak to the leaders of the program to explain her procedures, to determine what they needed to do to be successful. She was asked to, to present her side three more times to the same, the same type of group. They were not doing what she was doing, and they wanted to know how to do that. Currently, our library is too small. It, it seems to have gotten smaller through the years. So we do not ever want to see a good program eliminated from our, our schedule. We have now reached the point at our branch that we almost have to restrict the number of people who can come for a program, and that's because of lack of space. If we have a number of children who can sign up to come, they will be parents, so we know it's gonna be a tight, tight squeeze. As it is right now, our current space does not actually need the five-year plan under which we're currently operating. This makes it a very highly critical issue.
Our capital campaign is just, just starting, and we have a sizable amount of money to raise, and we're seeking help from federal and state agencies that make donations for projects such as this. We're also applying to foundations such as Harvest and others that we believe will help us work out the financing for this, this project. We would encourage the Board of Supervisors also to, to consider helping us as much as you can, recognizing that you have priorities. Certainly this, we would hope would become one of them. And we, we thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Bassett Library Ranch, and if you have a chance to, to go by and, and see it, we would encourage that. I'm sure Ms. Barley would be delighted to give you the Pinterest tour, and, and she can show you some of the things that go on in that facility and how real a crap we are. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there others?
Any questions? Thank you.
Are there others wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Anyone wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, that takes us to agenda item seventeen. I'll call for a motion for adjournment. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five, zero, Jennifer. Mr. and Ms. Turner and others, you may wanna make yourself available to the media, and the media may have some additional questions. Everyone have a good evening.